Good evening and welcome to the Twinsburg Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, August 15th, 2018. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Solerah?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
If you could all stand with me and join in the pious allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its full liberty and justice for all. We do have a few housekeeping items to take care of first under D. We also had a work session scheduled to follow this meeting this evening and unfortunately we have to postpone that for a later date, so that will be rescheduled and republicized. So my apologies for having to postpone that if you were planning on staying for that. And as well as I need to make a motion to change the agenda and remove item H6 from the agenda this evening.
I'll second that.
Mr. Curtis was second. The motion to remove agenda item H6, any discussion? Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Solerah?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
We also need to make a motion to add an executive session at the end of the meeting after miscellaneous. The reason will be read at that point in time. So do I have a second to the motion to add an executive session this evening?
It can be like I2 or something?
I guess we relabel the executive session as J and move adjournment to K.
I'll second that.
Mr. Felber seconded that motion. Any discussion? Mr. Aho, please call the roll.
Mr. Solerah?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you for the addition of those, removal and addition of those items. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. It is hard to believe that in a few short days, the halls of our schools will be filled with our students and another year will begin. With that comes one of my favorite things, and that is the recognition of our fantastic students from all of our buildings at the beginning of our board meetings. The recognition of our students' efforts and accomplishments throughout the year really puts an emphasis on why we are all up here and why we spend countless hours away from these regular meetings at committee meetings, researching, studying, and advocating for our district. While I know that we have some students here tonight who will be recognized for their work and effort on Twinsburg Schools Today Summer Edition, I want to take the time tonight to recognize one of my colleagues for his efforts in advocating for not only our district, but for public education in Ohio. More than a year ago, Mr. Curtis informed us that he was working with Representative Christina Rogner on legislation concerning charter schools and more importantly, the dollars that districts across the state, including ours unfairly have taken from their state foundation dollars. These discussions led to the creation and introduction by Representative Rogner of House Bill 87, which clarifies the process by which the Ohio Department of Education distributes funds that a community charter school has been directed to return to the state following certain audits. This bill will help return those funds back to the districts from which they were deducted as opposed to going back to the state coffers. During the process of this bill moving forward, it was also amended to tighten the regulations around e-school hardware and software, requiring the Ohio Department of Education to create rules regarding standards for e-school learning management software and allowing the auditor of state to be consulted on these policies. Mr. Curtis has spent countless hours working with Representative Rogner crafting the language of this bill, advocating for its support, and testifying in Columbus as it has moved its way through the House, culminating with the recent signing into law by Governor Kasich. I could not be more thankful of the efforts of Mr. Curtis and his advocacy for public education here in Ohio and in our district. While I know that Mr. Curtis does not do this for publicity or recognition, I want to take the time now to formally thank you and congratulate you on your efforts.
Thank you.
You've already informed me of your next goal and target, and I look forward to seeing them come to fruition. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate it. This district appreciates it, and I know public districts in Ohio appreciate it as well. That concludes my report, Superintendent.
Wow, that's hard to follow. Well, congratulations, Mr. Curtis, on behalf of the entire school district, particularly the residents who support our school district through the taxes that they pay. We recognize that every dime, dollar, penny, nickel, whatever counts, and we look forward to your continued advocacy on behalf of the school district. I know it's a long process, and you've dedicated a lot of your personal time to a great cause, not only for the students here in our district, but students across the state of Ohio. So thank you for your unselfish effort, and we congratulate you on behalf of our students. Well, as Mr. Solerah just indicated, we are just one week out from the 2018-19 school year. Have a couple members of the class of 19 in the audience tonight that we're going to recognize in a few minutes, and I know that this is a big year for our seniors and a big year for Dr. Hebert. It is her first year. Board of Education, I have to tell you that I had the pleasure of meeting with her and members of her leadership team this week. She had a mini-retreat with her staff, the department chairs, et cetera, and really set the tone for a great year at the high school. So we look forward to some very good things happening at Twinsburg High School this year under the leadership of Dr. Hebert. Board of Education, this year is going to be such an exciting year at our school district. You know that we have the Makerspaces that are coming alive in three of our schools and Makerspace activities at Wilcox and at Bissell. I want to thank Mrs. Farthing and Mrs. Mariola, Mr. McGing, and mostly Mr. Welker here who have worked behind the scenes to make sure everything is in place for the starting days of the school year. Makerspaces are great opportunities for our students to be innovative, creative, and engaging in 21st century skills, and you'll be hearing a lot about Makerspaces this year here in our school district. So we thank members of our team who've been behind the scenes, and we can hardly wait for the kids to engage in that new learning environment. Also, this is year two of the academy at Twinsburg High School. We're so excited that on Wednesday, August 29th, at 7:00 PM, we will be kicking off year two. Mr. Matt Fish, who is the owner and proprietor at the Melts Restaurants, will be the guest speaker and talk about his career path to his successful life here. So if anyone is interested in hearing Mr. Fish speak and then also just hear about the academy, we're excited that we have over 60 business partners, and of course, that's in alignment with our partnership with Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce. So super excited about that. Also, can't believe this, but we welcome the class of 2031. Our kindergarten kids will be here, 2019-2031. It's a long way from each other, right? But our kindergarten students will be starting school next week as well. We can hardly wait to meet and greet them. And of course, Board of Education, you know I'm excited about the kindergarten preparatory program. It is our newest group of preschool classes for children who are four years age, and we're so excited. We have 54 students filling 54 spots. Every spot is filled, and we are excited to welcome this new preschool opportunity to the Twinsburg City School District. So thank you very much for your support of that, and we look forward to hearing some great success for engaging our little ones in great educational opportunities over at Wilcox Primary School. Of course, we want to welcome our new parents to the community. We have a lot of new families who are joining us this year, not only our preschool and kindergarten parents, but families who have moved in over the summer, and I want to thank the members of our administrative assistant team who have done a great job of welcoming our parents that are new to the community and making sure our kids are registered and ready to begin school the first day. So thank you to that group of staff members. Our fall sports action is just about ready to kick off, and our marching band has been practicing up at band camp now the last couple of weeks. They sound and look great. So I'd like to remind our residents to please come out and support our kids. We have so many events happening nearly every night of the week, and if you go to our district website under the calendar, it's very up-to-date. Most days, you can find everything going on here in the district, so please come out and support our kids. I know they really appreciate when they're seeing us in the stands and cheering them on. Board of Education, typically, we're at school this week. It feels odd that we don't start school until next week, but remember, the calendar starts a week later this year, and I know our students are really glad about that, and to tell you the truth, we were really glad about that because a lot happened this week here. But this is the board meeting we would usually introduce all of the new staff members, but since they're not back yet from summer break, our annual introduction of all of our new staff members will be next board meeting, and that is Wednesday, September 5th. Mr. Sullen has been very busy writing biographies about everyone, so he will be presenting his first big role here. He'll be presenting members of our new staff members on Wednesday, September 5th, and we look forward to meeting all of them and introducing them formally to you at that point in time. Not to be undone, we do have a new member of our staff who has come out this evening, and we're going to introduce Mr. Brian Detwiler when we get to the personnel spreadsheets, and we appreciate Mr. Detwiler being here this evening and giving you just a sneak peek at some of the great enthusiastic staff members that we are recommending for employment this year. Board of Education, I just want to make an announcement, and this is kind of important for everybody who goes on our property. The access road that goes between Twinsburg High School and the pool, we have had complaints from mostly folks that are using the community parks and rec, the tennis courts, our senior center, the swimming pool, that we were having some individuals who are driving too rapidly on the access road on Tiger Trail. So today, we had installed speed bumps along that road. So I'm just informing everyone to slow down because if you don't, you're going to have some problem with your car, right? So there are signs posted to say please slow down on the access road on Tiger Trail. We hope that that slows everyone down and making sure that we're stopping at that stop sign. The traffic that comes down from where the swimming pool is, does not stop at a stop sign. It's not a four-way stop, and so if we're not stopping, they're coming onto where the stadium is. It can be a dangerous situation. So we've been working with the city. We think this is the best situation, and we're hoping that it keeps everybody safe. So just stay alert. It's going to be a bumpy road there, and please slow down and be alert when you're on the access road, which is Tiger Trail. Board of Education, I'm delighted this evening to introduce to you two of three of our students who have been the stars behind our summer edition of Twinsburg Schools Today. You know, every month, we record Twinsburg Schools Today at Cable 9, which is now Community Focus. It's the community cable channel here in our district, and in the summer, we always like to do a show that highlights the entire school year. And so last year, we had the occasion to have to find some students who had the talents and the creative spirit to help us because prior to that, you might remember Logan Powaski helped us when we first kicked this idea off. Well, Logan's off to do great things in California, and so we knew we had to find extremely talented students who wanted to help us with a very special project because this highlights all of the things that happen in our school district during the year. So Mrs. Farthing is showing you on the website where we currently have Twinsburg Schools Today Summer Edition. We're going to just show a few minutes of the front end of it if we could load it here.
Supply and shape, color, texture, value, and space.
I learned about those skills also in engineering course in other ways, and I've applied those because I'm often on this sketching. They just make my sketches and drawings look better. They're important skills.
The need to go over things that they use in science and in math, need to go over measures, need to go over. I brought my drawing board to art class, and that was the issue here in the hall. But I draw out all the measurements, make sure everything's square-sized, make my little keys.
I can do all cartoons and stuff. I have about 10 sketchbooks there. Film.
The words without art, this is X. So there's tools that I just haven't learned here that they can draw. Whatever. Yeah, they do.
Mr. Reese was looking to challenge some of the students more in the areas of science, technology, math, and engineering, and this was one of the courses that gave me the opportunity to apply a lot of those math and science skills. What we're using is in general, three-dimensional design software. In this case, we have CAD program, which is extremely user-friendly.
So we started off by learning how to design things for assembly training. We learned how to design a team on inventors, like sites that we use, like designer shapes and how actors can be.
We have to acknowledge a lot of things, like constraints, where it's going to be building, and then transfer it onto a digital platform. And constraints, like every great engineer, if you give it unlimited supplies, so it has to have easy assembly because the target audience will is for like three-plus-year-olds.
I think where we kind of struggle is common question, where am I ever going to use this to get? And this is a direct relation to, hey, engineering, I am a programmer in math and science, and I can apply it to something. We also get into the elements and principles of design kind of crossover in the art class, how certain things will make your eye and your brain react to a design.
Hello, this is Jim Reese, Principal RB Chamberlain Middle School. We are proud of our continued growth in all areas at RBC. Specifically, we have grown tremendously in the area of STEM or CIM programming. This year, we offered PLPW Intro to Engineering in Design to our course selection, a high school-level course. This is in addition to our existing high school level Art 1 and our Robotics and STEM level. We also partnered with CBCC and Kent State University for two programs, IT for Girls and Women in STEM. And I'm proud to say we've got 57 girls in our high school level engineering course next year, up from three last year. This past year, we also focused on climate and culture, where we were awarded the Purple Star for our work with military families in our PBS team attendance level training or a civil-level PBIS school. Now, thanks to all of our parents, ETA, and community, we look forward to a great 2018-19 Today, we're here at George G. Dodge Intermedia School looking at all the fun things that are going on. Between innovative ideas and outstanding academics, it's clear by this building.
So you can see Board of Education, that's the video behind it, and I hope everyone has an opportunity to take a look at all the great things that happened last year. I wanted to introduce the two of the three students that were behind the scenes in the creation video. If we can ask Josh about this, and one of these come forward. These two creative students are now members of the class of 19, so they're seniors this year, and I actually had to ask permission for them to be here this evening from Mr. Lally because they are members of our Twinsburg High School boys soccer team, and the kids are practicing tonight over on Tiger Stadium Field. But they have done such a great job. You can't really tell all of the work that goes behind the creation of a 30-minute video. I'm going to ask Jason and John if you can just share a little bit about what you did to create that video, some of the tasks that you had to complete to bring this project to life.
So over a couple of weeks, we traveled to all the schools, half a school day, each school, so like three hours, four hours to each school, filming B-roll, filming interviews.
And then we, so we just took time out of our early school day, and we went over to the schools, and we got to talk to a bunch of different teachers and principals and things like that, and conduct interviews and work with classic teleproduction. So it was really cool to see all the behind-the-scenes behind everything that went into it, and it came out pretty good, so.
Well, and the hardest part for the administrators is we all had to go over there one day, and we had to all tape our parts, and Jason was helping with the teleprompter. See, we can't do that by ourselves, so it was all done by teleprompter. And John was cheering us on, like, you can do this, you know? So it was really, really great. The third student that is not here is Lily Horvath, and Lily is actually a graduate of the high school. She graduated in May with the class of 2018 and is on her way to film school in California. So we are sorry that she's not here this evening. She did a nice job as well. And interesting thing, Lily is also a graduate of CBCC, Mr. Curtis. So she has a big future in film, and it started not only in our district, but through the work at CBCC that really piqued her interest, and off she is to a career hopefully in film once she finishes her studies. I'm not Mrs. Tringo, as you can tell, but you know what she always said is, did you bring somebody? Did you bring anybody?
The tradition.
I brought my dad, my sister, and my mom.
I brought John's dad and his sister.
It's all about family, right? Well, seriously, I am very grateful for all the work that you both did for us, and really, you were able to highlight a really great school year. Your efforts are now memorialized. In your little gift, there is a copy of this video along with the one that you did a year back from 2017 for your memory books or share with your families and friends, and we look forward to seeing you around Twinsburg High School. Lots of success with the soccer team, lots of success all year long, and we will see you at commencement at E.J. Thomas, if not before. There you go. Thank you, guys. And Mr. Solerah, that concludes my remarks for this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Once again, congratulations, boys, and good luck this year. Moving on to committee reports. Does anybody have any information for us on the committee reports? Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, I don't have anything to report on committees, but I do want to respond to the acknowledgement of the work that I did on House Bill 87. For one, thank you so much for the acknowledgement. I really do appreciate it, and I do recognize my board members have been supporting with me as well as the superintendent of all of the efforts that have gone into seeing House Bill 87 come to fruition and become law. Just to take you back a little bit, I mean, I first testified in the House Government Accountability and Oversight Committee, and that's chaired by Representative Blessing, and it stayed there for a long, long time. So we weren't sure whether or not it was going to make it out of committee, but due to the diligence of Representative Christina Rogner, I do want to make sure that I credit her. She helped push that bill and get it out of the House, at which time it moved over to the Senate, and it was introduced in the Senate's Education Committee, which is chaired by Senator Peggy Lerner. So I was called again to go down and provide testimony before the Senate Committee, and things moved a little bit more quickly on the Senate side. We were very optimistic that something would happen, we just didn't know when. And then story broke with ECA, and I think that that gave it legs. There's always impetus, you know, behind a bill making it and moving along. So there was a lot of interest, added interest in House Bill 87, at which time it was voted out of the Senate, and then there was conference. And at conference time, this is the time when Senate and House get together and kind of, you know, do things with bills that are clean. So it was just a one-and-a-half-page bill when it started out. There were some amendments that happened, and the online charter school piece of that was added at that time. And so then we wait. So had gone through the process, and then we waited and waited and waited, and kept calling the governor's office to find out when it was going to be signed, and then recently we just got word that the governor had indeed signed the bill. So we're ecstatic. I think that it benefits Twinsburg City Schools, but not only Twinsburg, but, you know, all public schools throughout Ohio. This is going to benefit them. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we just acknowledged that there are a lot of bills that are introduced that never make it out of committee. They die in committee, and so we're very fortunate that that was not the case with House Bill 87. And as Matt alluded to, I do have my sights on something else that I want to start once after the November election, so I won't let the cat out of the bag in terms of what that is. But just to say that the work continues. It never stops. We have to be persistent, and we have to stay on it. And so I do intend to continue doing that as the board's legislative liaison, and I appreciate just the honor of having the ability to do things on behalf of the district in Columbus.
Mark, I just want to say, timing is everything, and it just probably seemed like it was a never-ending battle, and I just, things played out the way they were supposed to. You just, you know, needed your patience, needed to keep your wits about you, and you did. And this goes, I mean, this was in the interest of our schools, but goes far beyond Twinsburg, so I mean, we all appreciate all your efforts on this.
Any other thing on the committee reports? Mr. Aho, I don't know if you have any blue cards for remasters today?
No blue cards today.
Moving on to agenda item G. Without objection from my colleagues, I'll read items G1 through 3. Item G1, resolved that Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. G2, resolved that Twinsburg Board of Education accepts classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And action item G3, resolved that Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Have a motion to accept items G1 through 3.
So moved.
Mrs. Davis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. DeFavio, second. Discussion? Mr. Powell, if you'd like.
Yes, thank you. Board of Education, as you can see by the certificated and classified spreadsheets before you this evening, the administrative team with the help of many of our staff members have been very busy recommending to you this evening some very talented new members of our staff. As I mentioned, we will have everyone here on the 5th of September, but I would like to ask Mr. Sullen to please come forward. We do have one of the newest members of our staff, Mr. Brian Detwiler, and Mr. Sullen is going to introduce him formally, and we're going to let Mr. Detwiler say a few things about his new position here in the school district. So Brian, if you would, come on up, please.
Good evening, board. At this time, I do want to introduce to you Mr. Brian Detwiler. I had the opportunity to sit in on his interview, and I was blown away of how he could engage the younger kids, you know? They're so squirrely, and they want to move, and he used the Camilla Cabello song, Havana, you know? And see these kids running around, or not running around, but moving around to the beat, but it was a very specific pattern. And the passion that he had for those kids, the kids were completely engaged, and the feedback from the students were, was just, wow, we really like him. You know, he can hold the other kids accountable as well as keeping our attention, and those were the words from the kids. You know, it's amazing how the students see things the way we do as administrators, you know? The accountability piece, the engagement piece, assessments, students see these things. And so Mr. Brian Detwiler, he is a graduate of Kent State University, four years music education, as well as in the interview, Mr. Randall Lanu sat in with us, and he also said, explained to us that Mr. Detwiler- And he also said, explained to us that Mr. Detwiler is a huge show choir person. So it was very high praise on Mr. Detwiler that Mr. Lanu said that, yeah, his team was pretty competitive. So I think underneath that, I really took that to heart because we all know Mr. Lanu and the type of effort that he puts in. And to sit here and say, hey, you know what, his team is always competitive, the team that he worked for. So he is excited to have him on his team now. So we're excited to have Mr. Detwiler here with us here in the Twinsburg City School District. We see a seamless transition happening as well as this feeder into our high school program, which is already big, but we can always go bigger. All right? So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Detwiler.
So I'm Brian Detwiler. I graduated Kent State, like you said. I'm so excited to be a part of the Twinsburg team. It's going to be such a great year. I've been working really hard already with Mr. Lanu on all of the crazy things that the show choirs are going to do this year. I'm not sure what my schedule is for Dodge, but I have things planned and ready to go. So I'm just more than blessed to be here. So thank you so much.
Did you want to introduce who came with you tonight?
Oh, yeah. This is my fan club. This is my dad, Bill, and my mom, Leslie. I asked them, what are you guys wearing? Because I knew they were going to be here, so.
Well, and it's no joke, we actually had the students come to the last round of interviews with us, with the administrative team, and Mr. Detwiler had to teach a lesson. And so we had, I think, ten or twelve Dodge Tigers.
Yeah, I think it was like eleven or something.
Yeah, they were here at seven o'clock in the morning, believe that or not, and...
They weren't tired.
No, they were not. No, and they were actively engaged and were very opinionated about the feedback they provided to the candidates that they had a chance to be the students in their classroom. So congratulations, you came up on the top here. And we look forward to seeing some great things from you over at Dodge and High School.
I'm excited.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on items G one through three?
Other than just to say welcome to Twinsburg. And I make these remarks all of the time when Mrs. Powers have, you know, when we have new employees, new to the district, is that, you know, Twinsburg is known for a tradition of excellence. Clearly, you fit the bill. So we're looking very, you know, we're looking forward to having you. It seems that you're very excited to get rolling. So, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what you're able to do with our kids because, you know, we can always use more energy. We got a lot of it, but we can always use more. So welcome aboard.
Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes. Items G one through three passes five zero. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read items H one through five. H one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a donation from Ohio Piled Prints Incorporated, 410 Diner Bell Road, Ohio Piled, Pennsylvania, 15470 to Twinsburg High School in the amount of $170.23. Donation from the sale of Twinsburg apparel at local retailers to be used for miscellaneous instructional supplies per the attached exhibit. H two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education directs the superintendent to approve on an as-needed basis, an expulsion appeal hearing designated for the Board of Education for the 2018-2019 school year, Ronald L. Victor, Dr., at hourly rate of $150 plus mileage at 55 cents per mile. Item H three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the Twinsburg Tigers athletic pass rates for the 2018-2019 season per the attached exhibit. H four, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the Ohio Schools Council for the October 2018 Cooperative School Bus Purchasing Program to advertise and receive bids on behalf of said board as per the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of two seventy-two passenger unitized conventional school bus chassis and bodies and one forty-seven passenger unitized conventional school bus chassis and body with a wheelchair lift. H five, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves and authorizes its 2018 master planning contract to update the master plan for the 2015-16 school year with Lesco Associates Incorporated as sent to the board under separate cover at a cost not to exceed $8,000. This is a general fund expense. Do have a motion to accept items H one through five as read.
So moved.
Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curtis, discussion?
Just one question, Mr. Walker, on the, it's the same consortium that we're usually the same places that we're getting our buses in.
Yeah, so...
Nineteen ninety-nine rates.
So, yeah, we've had a really good success rate with Ohio Schools Council. And this is the second year that they've moved up the process to have two bids, one in October. So that allows us to get better pricing for our next summer purchase.
Excellent, thank you.
Also appreciate the donation from Ohio Piled Prints. They donated before, haven't they?
Often, yes.
Yeah, I see that name all the time, so, yeah.
Any other discussion? Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Item H seven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a memorandum of understanding with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for the Ohio Online Learning Program effective August 1st, 2018 through July 31st, 2019 per the attached exhibit. This is a general fund expenditure. Do have a motion to accept item H seven.
So moved.
Mrs. Davis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, discussion?
Yeah, just one brief comment. I do have work with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio. I'm affiliated with them. So I just want to explain that I'll be abstaining from this vote. However, the service is a great service. You know, a lot of our students do work online and a lot of other districts utilize things like that as well. So no slide on the program, just have to abstain because I don't want there to be a appearance of a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Any other discussion? Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Abstain.
Mr. Soler?
Yes. H seven passes four zero with one abstention. Item H eight, whereas the Board of Education finds it beneficial to implement a third-party payment process for compensating athletic officials through an arrangement with Arbiter Sports LLC, a Utah-based organization that is endorsed and supported by the Ohio High School Athletic Association. And whereas the payment process utilized by Arbiter Sports is facilitated through the use of Bank of Utah, an FDIC-insured financial institution, and Chase Bank, which is already an approved depository of the public funds of Twinsburg Schools. And whereas to the extent that the Bank of Utah is utilized as a depository of the public monies of the Twinsburg City Schools, it is necessary to approve the Bank of Utah as an additional depository in accordance with Uniform Depository Act, ORC 135.01 to 135.21, and board policy. And whereas the Bank of Utah has provided a copy of their most recent financial statement and application for deposit of public monies and an agreement for deposit of public monies, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the attached user agreement with Arbiter Sports to serve as the vendor to electronically pay athletic officials. Be it further resolved that the Board further authorizes the establishment of an initial $5,000 Arbiter Sports fund account. Be it further resolved that in accordance with Sections 135.21D of the Ohio Revised Code and Board Policy 6140, the Board of Education hereby appoints the Bank of Utah as an additional depository for active and interim deposits for a period beginning November 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. And further, that the treasurer be authorized and directed to execute such depository contracts and security agreements as required to make this resolution effective. Do have a motion to accept item H eight as read.
So moved.
Mr. Curtis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Davis, discussion? Mrs. Powers?
So many school districts who are affiliated with the OHSAA have gone on board with Arbiter Pay for the compensation of officials. It actually expedites the process of payment for them. One of the things that I heard last year from some of the officials that I occasionally talked to was the slow nature of them being compensated for their duties here, helping officiate our games and such. And so the OHSAA has had a contract with Arbiter Pay for some time. And we like to make sure that things work before we jump on board. So we have been looking at this for a while now. Marty and Chad vetted the contract with legal counsel. And we believe that this is a good thing for individuals who support our school district, making sure that they're compensated. I think it's an online thing to their bank account.
Right, yeah.
So that they're not waiting for a paper check from us to arrive in the mail.
One thing nice about it, too, is all their information is in the system. So every time they're doing a game, if it's at a different place, they don't need to bring all their paperwork there, you know, that they need to hand in. It's all there, it's all online. Then the OHSAA was kind of started this thing about three, four years ago. They endorsed it, they did all of the stuff. And they also then give us a discount off of the rate that's currently charged in other states. So it was nice that OHSAA took the lead on that. We, you know, let the other districts get the guys on board and now pretty much all the officials are on board. So we'll just be able to piggyback on that pretty seamlessly.
Good. Who would handle, for example, like a 1099? Being that they're working for multiple entities, I guess they would have to exceed 600 per entity, like Twinsburg Schools or another school.
No, actually, now with Arbiter Pay, it all goes through Arbiter Pay. So anytime they hit over 600, Arbiter Pay is going to send them a 1099.
They send them a 1099.
Whereas before they could...
It doesn't matter with multiple entities, it's just...
Whereas before, they could work different schools and not go over.
So they're the fiduciary now.
Yeah.
And we don't have to, that's less paperwork your office has to do.
Right.
Okay.
And just so everyone knows, this will come into play beginning of the winter sports season. There are some things behind the scenes that have to happen. So we'll start the year with paper checks and then transition to Arbiter Pay come winter sports time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Soler?
Yes. Item H eight passes five zero. Moving on to miscellaneous, any comments from my colleagues?
I just see some Scots here in the audience, and I want to thank you for coming on one of your last summer evenings and spending it at our exciting board meeting. But thank you for showing up and you're welcome any time.
Yeah, I'm sure that, you know, the information is riveting, so. Have plenty to write about, but no, it's always good to have guests come to our board meetings and hopefully you learn something. If not, at least you got a chance to check us out, so thanks for being here.
And we will, we'll take a brief recess before, once we enter into executive session. If you guys have any questions you want to, while we're here, while we're all here, feel free to come up and grab somebody.
I just want to give one final shout out to the class of eighteen. They're all going and driving and they got a week and I'm going to make it. Yeah. But for those that are about to be empty nesters, you know, God bless. I see a lot of pictures being posted at dorm rooms and such. Tigers are everywhere now.
That's right. That was a great class. We wish them well.
Yes. Any else on the miscellaneous? Item J, I will make a motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 7:44 to discuss employment compensation and discipline of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, second. Mr. Aho, please call a roll.
Mr. Soler?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Board is in executive session.